Good evening, everyone. We're going to get started. Welcome to the November 2024 Hoboken Board of Education meeting. Thank you all for being here. If you're joining us this evening to speak on agenda or non-agenda items, kindly use the sign-up sheets located at the podium down in front. Ms. Good, can you please read the statement of compliance?
Yes. This meeting is being held in conformity to the Open Public Meetings Act NJ SA 10:4-6. Proper public notice of the meeting was published in the local papers on January 5th, 2024. If any board member or member of the public in attendance believes that the meeting is in violation of the Open Publics Meeting Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that they make a statement at this time. The Board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the Board at a later date on CATV, Channel 77, and Files, Channel 46. The full meeting recording will also be made available on Board Docs, which can be accessed through the district homepage. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the decorum of the public process and is mindful that we live in an electronic age of computers, cell phone, and other electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic, I'm sorry, devices during the course of the meeting, and if use of the device is necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct personal business.
Thank you, Ms. Good. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
As many of you know, the city of Hoboken suffered a tremendous loss last Tuesday with the sudden and unexpected pass Oh, God, Ms. We'll do this. Can we do that first? With the sudden and unexpected passing of City Council President and Sixth Board Council Meeting Councilwoman Jennifer Jettino. Please join us in a moment of silence in remembrance of Councilwoman Jettino. Thank you, and I apologize. I skipped over the roll call, so Ms. Good, can you please read the roll?
Ms. Angley?
Here.
Ms. Catamatory?
Here.
Ms. Delira?
Here.
Mr. Delator?
Here.
Mr. Grana?
Here.
Ms. Connor?
Mr. Cluffel?
Here.
Ms. Norwood?
Here.
Ms. McGurk?
Here. Thank you, Ms. Good. Returning to the tragic passing of Jennifer Jettino, I just wanted to say that she was a friend to this district and to every family in the city of Hoboken. Jen was a person who was hyper-focused on helping her community and especially seniors and families who were at risk. She will be missed, and our thoughts and prayers are with her husband Joe, her three sons, and all who loved her. And I don't know if anyone on the Board wanted to say a few words. If you do, you can do so at this time.
Jen was a neighbor and friend for many years. I first got to know Jen, actually, in 2012, when I was running for my first term on the Hoboken School Board, along with Jean Marie Mitchell and Ruth Tyroller at the time. And it was a November morning, right after Hurricane Superstorm Standee. So everybody was busy doing stuff at home, but as we were getting ready on Election Day, I think it was November 5th that year, Jen shows up with her three boys in tow, ready to campaign for us. And I'll always remember that because I know that, as you alluded to, Aileen, that she not only was a brilliant councilwoman and lovely neighbor and spirited community member, but also an advocate for good governance and quality of public education. So I just wanted to share that, that sort of a personal connection to the Board and to public education. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. We're going to begin our evening with recognitions for the October Students of the Month. At this time, I will turn the meeting over to Assistant Superintendent Sandra Rodriguez-Gomez.
Before we begin, I would like to honor the brave men and women who have given so much of themselves for the good of our country. It is with deep respect and admiration that we thank all veterans for their service and sacrifice. Welcome to the student recognition portion of this meeting. I extend a heartfelt welcome to the members of our Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Johnson, our administrators, faculty who may be present, certainly community members, students, and their very special guests, their families. I stand before you filled with pride as I introduce our talented principals, and they take the podium to share detailed information and anecdotes about the students being honored here tonight as October's Students of the Month. These exceptional students embody the value of hard work, perseverance, and kindness. They set a powerful example for their peers and are a true source of pride and inspiration to their families and teachers. Each of these students has distinguished themselves through their dedication to learning, their positive attitude, and their commitment to their school community. Their achievements remind us of what can be accomplished with effort and resilience, and they motivate us to strive for excellence each and every day. We are also very proud of you and can't wait to hear about both your academic and social accomplishments. We will begin the recognition with Joseph F. Brandt School and its principal, Charles Bartlett. He will then introduce the Connors' Principal, Ms. Addy, and she will follow the same pattern, introducing our next presenters, Principals Shannon, Sorefin, and Pica Pietra of Wallace Hoboken Middle and Hoboken High School. Each will celebrate their school's selection and pause for a picture opportunity. Again, thank you for being here with us this evening, and with that, I would ask Principal Bartlett to join me at the podium.
Thank you, Mrs. Rodriguez-Gomez, and good evening, community members, Dr. Johnson, and members of the Board. At this time, I would like to ask Leah Doherty to come join me at the podium.
Congratulations to Leah Doherty, the Brandt Elementary School Student of the Month for October 2024. Leah is a second grader in Mrs. Gardner's class and was nominated by her world language teacher, Ms. Lynn. Ms. Lynn said Leah always tries her best to use Mandarin outside of the classroom. She greets people in the hallway and even practices what she has been learning during lunch or the passport-after-school program. Ms. Lynn also said Leah has been excellent with class participation. She can name seventeen parts of the body from her head to her toes in Mandarin. She says the classroom rules in Mandarin to remind the class to stay focused during instructional time, and she also helps her classmates when they are in need. Leah's homeroom teacher, Mrs. Gardner, said Leah has flourished in second grade. She is consistently following classroom rules as well as making sure that she is on task and trying her best throughout the day. Leah is a kind and thoughtful friend and is always willing to help students when they have a problem to solve. Leah is an active participant in the classroom and is always enthusiastic about the new learning topic of the day. Leah has a wonderful personality and is full of energy. When I see her during the school day, no matter if it is in the early morning or later in the afternoon, she greets me enthusiastically and helps me see that students are learning, having fun, and feel comfortable while doing it. Her energy is best displayed outside of our main office on the Student of the Month photo board, and if you happen to pass by that and see her smile in the picture, you will know exactly what I mean. Leah's older sister, Gianna, crossed paths with me in the hallway when I was working on this speech and when I told her what I was doing, she took a moment to say that she was proud of Leah because she works really hard and tries her best at whatever she is doing. Leah plays soccer outside of school and is very proud of her team for making it to the playoffs. She also likes to play Roblox, play video games on her Nintendo, and play with her magnet tiles. Her favorite subject in school is math because she wants to get even smarter with it. When she grows up, she wants to be a nurse because she wants to help people. Leah said she is proud of winning this Excuse me. Leah said she is proud of winning this award. "I like learning because it is really fun and I want to become as smart as I can be," she said. Well, Brandt is certainly lucky to have your enthusiasm and love of learning, Leah. Keep having fun while you learn and keep being a great example to all of our students. Please join me in congratulating Leah Doherty, our Brandt Student of the Month.
At this time, I would like to welcome to the podium the Principal of the Connors Elementary School, Mrs. Juliana Addy.
At this time, I'd like to call up Christian Delvecchio, our Connors' Student of the Month. Christian Delvecchio was nominated for Student of the Month by his fourth-grade homeroom teacher, Ms. Gwendolyn Rodriguez. Christian is an exemplary student. Christian has been a Connors' koala since kindergarten. He was nominated for this honor because he is hardworking, thoughtful, and helpful, both to his classmates and his peers, often volunteering when help is needed. Christian completes all of his assignments and homework, participates in class discussions, and strives to be a top student. Christian is an asset to the class because he sets an example for class participation and dedication to learning. He is kind and friendly to all students and staff. His favorite subjects in school are English Language Arts and Mathematics, but he also enjoys art, music, Mandarin, physical education, and science, which is basically his entire schedule. He is a member of the Connors Band, where he plays the trumpet. In addition, he comes to school early once a week to learn how to play the ukulele. Christian has many academic and athletic achievements. He earned honor roll throughout his entire third-grade year, and it is his goal to continue to achieve honor roll status throughout his entire fourth-grade year. In the past, he has also won awards for physical education, art, and Mandarin during our Connors pep rallies. Outside of school, Christian is heavily involved in athletics. He started playing baseball when he was six years old, and currently he is a pitcher and a shortstop for the Young Dems Little League team. He plays basketball with Hoboken Elite and in the Recreation League. Last year, his recreation team competed in the championship game. He also has played soccer and lacrosse. Christian is not sure yet where he wants to go to college nor what he wants to study. However, he knows he wants to play baseball in college. His career aspirations are to become a professional baseball player. Mr. Zardo shared that Christian loves music. His ability to grasp new music theory concepts is amazing. Every time his class is assigned a music theory lesson, Christian is always one of the first students to complete his work. Side note, he always receives a perfect score. Not only does Christian excel at music theory, he has a passion for playing the trumpet that is so uplifting and filled with joy. His pitch is perfect, and he never misses a note. "I'm so fortunate to have the opportunity to work with Christian as a music student, and I look forward to seeing and hearing him grow as a musician." Congratulations, Christian. Rock on, from Mr. Zardo. When Christian learned he was chosen to represent Connors School as District Student of the Month, he said, "I love being a Connors' koala." His advice to others, Connor, other Connor, Connors' koalas, is that whenever they feel or if anyone ever feels that they can't do it, his advice is for just to try your hardest and you will succeed. Congratulations, Christian, on achieving this prestigious award. We are so proud of you. Can everyone join me in a round of applause for Christian Delvecchio? At this time, I'd like to call up Mr. Martin Shannon, Principal of Wallace.
We are here tonight to celebrate Raquel Barrett as the Wallace Student of the Month for October. Nominated by her teacher, Ms. Perez, Raquel has shown outstanding leadership and has been a wonderful role model for her kindergarten peers. Always eager to lend a helping hand, she embodies the Wildcat spirit of kindness and inclusion. Raquel has been working diligently on her writing and consistently participates in both ELA and math lessons, contributing insightful answers and following directions promptly. Her enthusiasm for learning shines through in every lesson. In addition to her academic efforts, Raquel has enriched the classroom and the entire Wallace community by helping friends with their work and making everyone feel welcome. Her kindness extends to playtime, where she ensures that everyone is included. Outside of the classroom, Raquel loves reading, singing, and playing soccer. At just five, soon to be six, she dreams of becoming a singer, fashion designer, and dancer. When asked about her experience at Wallace, she simply said, "I love kindergarten." Let's hear it for Raquel, our Wallace School Student of the Month. Next, I would like to invite Principal Sorefin of the Hoboken Middle School to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon. Good evening, everyone. Please welcome Emron Casal, Hoboken Middle School Student of the Month for October 2024. Emron was nominated by his ELA teacher, Ms. Rosmester, who describes him as an exceptional student in every way. From the moment he steps into class, Emron's commitment to excellence is clear. He's always prepared with his materials and homework ready, fully engaged in every lesson. In ELA, Emron is both attentive and insightful, bringing thoughtful ideas to discussions and staying focused on each task. These qualities shine in his social studies class as well, where he's respectful, responsible, a student who's always ready to learn and engage with his peers and teachers. Emron's work ethic translates to his grades as well. He consistently achieves at high level, challenging himself to excel across all subjects. He's even enrolled in CTY, showing his drive to push himself even further. Emron's impact at Hoboken Middle School goes beyond academics. He embodies kindness, respect, mindfulness, setting a positive example for everyone around him. He greets everyone in the hallway, follows our school expectations, and is a wonderful representation of our core values. His respect and empathy for both his teachers and classmates make him an invaluable part of our school community. Mr. Tamber, Emron's math teacher, speaks highly of him as well. He describes Emron as a natural leader, willing to help, willing to lend a helping hand, and quick to grasp new mathematical concepts, always eager to help others learn. Mr. Tamber also had the pleasure of seeing Emron excel on the cross-country team, where he's been a standout in long-distance running, consistently placing in the top five in our meets. Emron's combination of academic excellence and athletic talent make him a role model for his peers. His infectious personality and positive outlook will carry him far behind, beyond his academic career. Emron's friends JP and Gavin also had some words to share. JP describes Emron as thoughtful and caring friend who always there when you need him most, and also as a talented soccer player, showing him how well-rounded he is. Gavin echoes JP's words, adding that Emron is an honest, genuinely good person. It's clear that Emron isn't just an outstanding student, he's a loyal and supportive friend. When Emron found out he'd been selected as Student of the Month, he was generally surprised. He thought he might earn great-level recognition but didn't expect to be chosen for the entire school. In his free time, Emron loves playing sports, especially as part of Hoboken Middle School's first-ever cross-country team, as well as Hoboken's city soccer team. When he grows up, he aspires to become an engineer, given his strengths in math and science. Emron, you embody the best of what it means to be a Hoboken Middle School Tiger, and I can't wait to see all the great things that you'll continue to achieve. Please join me in a round of applause for our Student of the Month for October, Emron Shannon. At this time, please welcome Ms. Pica Pietra, the Principal of Hoboken High School.
Good evening, everyone. Unfortunately, my Student of the Month, Yuselyn Dominguez, will not be able to join us tonight, but she is going to join us next month. She had a soccer dinner, and the girls' soccer team did have such a fabulous year. I did not want to pull her away, but I'm going to share just a snippet of what people had to say about her. This young lady, this is me, this young lady is one of the best that walks the halls at Hoboken High School. She is a student that is loved and admired by her peers, teachers, and administration because she gives 150% to all she does. Mr. McCauley shared that Yuselyn is an outstanding student in the Video and the Connected World II class. She has given everything she has to her screenplay, storyboard, and directing our latest production. She has also shown the true entertainment spirit of the show Must Go On. After injuring her leg, she still comes to class focused on the production and without any complaint. Yuselyn is not just the Student of the Month, but the Director of the Year, so congratulations on this honor well earned. She's an outstanding student who participates in class and completes every assignment. If she misses a class, she advocates and checks in with me to find out what she has missed. She extends kindness to her classmates and participates in the school community. She is bright, who is committed, inquisitive, and insightful, and empathetic. She always brings a new perspective to consider during class discussions. She's involved in Hispanic Culture Club, Agapi Club, soccer, National Honor Society, A&amp;A tutoring, craft supervisor at elementary school dance, and she worked as a teacher's aide in a daycare. I look forward to celebrating Yuselyn at our next Board of Ed meeting.
Congratulations to everyone who was recognized this evening. We are so proud of you, and we cannot wait to see what the future holds for you. We'd now like to welcome the representatives from the Hoboken Middle School, Leba Newfield and Avery Battles up to provide us with an update on everything that's happening at HMS.
Good evening, Dr. Johnson, Ms. Rodriguez-Gomez, Hoboken Board of Education, and all others in attendance tonight. My name is Avery Battles, and I'm an eighth-grade student here at Hoboken Middle School.
And I'm Leba Newfield, also an eighth-grade student at Hoboken Middle School. It is a privilege to be here this evening to represent our school and share the exciting events and programs from the first marking period at HMS. First, we'd like to highlight our vibrant club offerings, which include Artist's Corner, GSA, Best Buddies, Student Council, the Academic Team, National Junior Honor Society, Debate Team, Entrepreneur Club, Junior Best Fans, Band, Chorus, Classroom Without Walls, River Keepers, and more. Allow us to share some highlights from a few of these.
Our Best Buddies program continues to foster inclusivity and compassion at Hoboken Middle School. This year, we are thrilled to have Ms. Kristen Verloff, an eighth-grade student, Kiana Bruegerman, representing us in the Best Buddies Champion of the Year campaign. Through their efforts, they are helping fund initiatives that build meaningful friendships, create employment opportunities, and provide leadership training to advocate for those individuals with intellectual and developmental problems. We are proud that Ms. Verloff and Kiana will be honored this Friday at the Best Buddies Gala in Tatooine, New Jersey. Let us wish them luck as they continue this important work.
Another exciting new program is our Entrepreneur Club, where students explore the world of business, develop creative ideas, and gain hands-on experience. In this club, students learn key skills like problem-solving, teamwork, and financial literacy, and they even run our school store. We can't wait to see the innovations our students will bring to HMS and the impact they'll make on our school community.
We are excited to introduce our first-ever middle school sports program. This fall, HMS athletes have proudly represented our school through girls' volleyball, girls' soccer, boys' soccer, and coed cross-country. These student athletes have shown incredible dedication, balancing practice and game schedules with their academic responsibilities. Each practice and every game has helped them grow stronger and more skilled. We invite our HMS community to keep up with our weekly newsletter for upcoming winter sports and announcements, including boys' and girls' basketball, wrestling, and coed swimming. Additionally, Hoboken Middle School has launched a new coed athletic training program for our sixth graders in collaboration with Prime Athletic Development. This program focuses on functional movement, speed, strength, and conditioning in a positive and structured environment, helping our younger students build a foundation in physical fitness and teamwork.
Academically, we had a school-wide reading of Four Perfect Pebbles, a memoir by Marion Blumenthal-Lazan recounting her experiences as a Holocaust survivor. In this powerful book, Marion shares her memories from Nazi concentration camps and her ritual of finding four perfect pebbles to represent her hope that her family would survive together. This past month, we were honored to host Marion Blumenthal-Lazan herself at HMS, where she shared her story with us directly, answering our questions and inspiring us with her message of resilience, hope, and tolerance.
We also enjoyed our annual Fall Festival on October 18th, a celebration that brought together students, families, and staff for games, pumpkin painting, and fall activities. It was a fantastic event that highlighted our school spirit and sense of community. Thank you to everyone who participated and helped make it a success. Looking ahead, we're excited about the upcoming PTO bingo night on January 16th and hope to see everyone there.
Thank you, Hoboken Board of Education, for allowing us to share these updates. We look forward to keeping you informed about our achievements and activities in the coming months.
Thank you so much for that very thorough update, ladies. I'd now like to ask our representative from Hoboken High School, Jenna Sirio, to provide us with an update from all the good things happening at HHS.
Good evening. My name is Jenna Sirio, and I'm the Hoboken High School Student Government Representative, and thank you for having me this evening. For general events, on October 23rd, Hoboken High School held their annual showcase of excellence from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. Students helped represent their favorite clubs and organizations through booths and tables. On the 24th, Hoboken High School hosted their seventh annual Powderpuff game held at the Tagleary Stadium. This year, our juniors defeated the seniors in a really close game, 14 to 13, and while it was a heated match, our juniors and seniors continued to show support for each other and shake hands at the end, emphasizing that we are still one big Red Wing family. On the 29th, we held a bake sale in order for breast cancer awareness. It was very successful and delicious. Later into October, the junior class had held a popcorn fundraiser from the 26th to the 23rd, where students and parents had the opportunity to purchase bags of popcorn for their class, in which all the money would go towards dues and trips. It was also extremely successful, raising hundreds of dollars. On Halloween, we hosted our annual Halloween costume contest with different categories of funniest, best group, cutest duo, and more. Many of our Red Wings had a blast, with some even choreographing dances to go along with their presentations. For clubs, our National Honor Society has been very active in both our school and community. We are currently making T-shirts, providing many service opportunities for members, such as canned food drives, shelter help, and tutoring. Our math and bioolympiad clubs are focused on studying for upcoming competitions. Yearbook Club and Literary Magazine are working hard on their projects, with Literary Magazine running a raffle for a Stanley Cup and posting a fall writing contest for our students, and there will also be one in the spring. For future events to look forward to, on the 21st, we will have our Student Government induction ceremony held in the auditorium. On the 14th, the Student Government will plant flags for our Field of Hero events after school, followed by the ceremony for our Field of Hero events after school, followed by the ceremony the day after. Be sure to spread the word and please show up if possible. Registration is currently open for our first annual holiday cookie competition. The event will be held on Sunday, December 15th at 2:30 p.m. If you are interested in being in the contest, please contact Mr. Munoz at Hoboken High School. The Student Government and National Honor Society, in conjunction with the Hoboken Community Center, is hosting a canned food drive that's running all of this week. And for sports, just a quick shout-out to the girls' tennis team for being county champions. Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak, and we look forward to seeing you at our events. And as always, go Red Wings!
Thank you so much for that very informative report. We're now going to turn it over to Dr. Johnson for her superintendent's report. If anyone needs to get home for a early bedtime, we understand if you need to sneak out as we all get situated.
So we put it there so you guys could see it as well, so we make it a little easier. But if you feel like you can't see it, you can move it. It's okay.
Okay. So this evening, we have a student achievement presentation, which is really a sneak peek to what families are going to see at each of the schools. And each of the schools, there'll be a little bit of a more in-depth presentation because it'll be more disaggregated data, more specific to each individual school, each individual grade in the schools. So tonight, what you're going to see is more of an overview of our district-wide data. Once the schools do their presentations, we will put both the district presentation, as well as the school's presentation, on the district website. So we'll start off with just an overview of enrollment because this does play a role in our student achievement data. So in terms of our enrollment data, what you can see in front of you is a breakdown of our pre-K enrollment data from 2019-20 all the way through 2024-25. You can also see our enrollment data for kindergarten through fifth grade. You can see our middle-school data from grades six through eighth grade, our high-school data, ninth through 12th grade. You can also see our total kindergarten through 12th grade data and our grades pre-K through 12th data. So just to give you a little overview, I think the best thing to do is to focus on our pre-K to 12th grade data to start. So you can see that in 2019-2020, our pre-K through 12th enrollment showed a number of 3,099 students. And as of October 15th, 2024-2025, our enrollment data was 3,667 students. You know, oftentimes, people will talk about the fact that it's our kindergarten through fifth grade data that's increasing, or it's our pre-K data that's increasing. But if you take note of, for example, our high-school data, we see an increase from 2019-20 from 426 students to 653 students in a matter of five to six years. So if anyone has questions on the enrollment at the end of the presentation, any board members, I'd be more than happy to answer those questions. So now let's move into NJSLA data. So NJSLA is the state assessment that's administered to all students in the state of New Jersey in public schools. It's administered to students in third grade through ninth grade, and it's administered in English Language Arts, Mathematics, and in Science. And so what I did was I put some data together for you so you can see where our students started in 2015-16 and where they ended in 2023-24. There are a couple years that you'll see between 2019 and 2021 that don't exist, but that's because of COVID and the pandemic halted testing for a few years. It's kind of interesting just to point out that back in 2015-16 and 16-17, you can see that the district was underperforming in terms of the state's average. But then right around that 2018-19 mark, we made the crossover, and our trend just continued to increase. And so now you can see that our students in grades three through nine, holistically, in English Language Arts, are outperforming the state of New Jersey's average. What I did here for all of you is just to provide you with a breakdown of the English Language Arts data by grade level so that you could actually see where we are in each grade, from three all the way through nine. So you can take a look at that. And while you're looking, if anyone has any questions, if you want to jot them down, by all means, you could do so, and then we'll come back to them at the end of the presentation. On this next slide, what I provided for you was our data collectively at the elementary school level, the middle-school level, and then the high-school level. So that you get a sense of, you know, how in, from 2022 to 2024, how are we doing in terms of our performance kind of compared to ourselves over those three years? So you can see where we are. The high school has made some wonderful progress in the last three years. Now we go into district subgroup data. And what I would like to draw your attention to, so Board of Education members, in front of you, there is a stapled piece of paper, two pieces of paper. The first one has math data. The second sheet of paper has ELA data. So the reason that I provided this data to you is because the state of New Jersey has provided districts with disaggregated data for both subgroups and programs. So when we talk about subgroup data, we're talking about a breakdown of students in terms of race and ethnicity. And when we talk about program data, we're talking about data in terms of students who fall into different categories, such as free and reduced lunch status, 504 status, ELL, special education, or general education. The state of New Jersey does not release statewide averages, so I'm not able to provide you with the overall state's average yet. That probably won't be until maybe early spring that I can provide you with the state averages. But what I was able to do was just pull some district presentations off of their websites that they've done over the last couple weeks. And I tried to give a little bit of a range. So you'll see there's a comparison of Hoboken's subgroup data and program data in comparison to, I selected Tom's River, North Arlington, and Robbinsville because it kind of gives you a little bit of a range of districts in terms of demographics. So you can see that in mathematics, you can kind of see where we're performing. Now, please understand that these numbers from the other districts do not represent the state's averages. It just represents those school districts' averages. But I wanted to be able to give you a little bit of a comparative view. And you can take a look at our program data. So I know a few of you were asking me some questions about our economically disadvantaged students in mathematics and our special education students in mathematics and how they compare. So you can get a little bit of a sense of how they compare against these three districts. And in terms of mathematics, for example, at the middle-school level, we're kind of tackling the achievement gap with our economically disadvantaged students by providing an intensive math intervention program during the school day. And so that's happening three days a week. And it started in October, and it's going to run all the way through May. And so we're really curious what our economically disadvantaged data will look like next year after this intensive program. If you turn the page, you'll see our subgroup and program data for English Language Arts. And if you drop your eyes down to the program data piece, you can see that our special education students, where they're performing versus these three other districts. You can also see our 504 students are doing extremely, extremely well. And you can see where our ELL students are performing as well. So again, this is not necessarily part of the official presentation, but I did want to provide Board of Education members with a little bit of comparison. So you can see what the subgroup and district program data looks like. I also wanted to provide you with our data for something called access testing. Not sure how many of you are familiar with access testing, but if you're not familiar with it, this is the testing that we use for our ELL students. And we are required to report out what the access testing data looks like. And so you can kind of see from 2021-22, we have 15% of our students in all grades because access testing is administered across all grades. 15% actually scored over 4.5%. And in a matter of two years, you can see an increase to up to 35%. And we attribute some of that to our, not only our ELL program, but also our reading interventions that we're implementing in our classes. Next, you can see our NJSLA data for mathematics. And similarly to the NJSLA data for ELA, you can kind of see both at that same time, that 2018-19 time period, you can see where the district is really closing in on the state's average. And you can see where we ultimately cross over and begin to outperform the state. And you can see that we are continuing to do so in 2023-24. If you go to the next slide, this is kind of interesting because the data looks like it's kind of inconsistent. But I provided you with some notes on the right-hand side of the slides just to give you a little bit of some context. So in eighth grade in mathematics, our students have two different types of mathematics that they can participate in. They can either take eighth-grade, a general eighth-grade mathematics class, which focuses predominantly on pre-algebra, or they can take Algebra I in eighth grade. Interestingly, you could see that our eighth graders that are taking Algebra I are far, far, far outperforming the state's average. And someone asked me at one point about how many kids is that? And what does that really equate to? So 56% of the eighth-grade students last year took Algebra I in eighth grade. And you can almost see the same phenomenon happening at the ninth-grade level. So at the ninth-grade level, the students who are in Algebra I in ninth grade are the students who were in general mathematics in eighth grade. These are students who do show and exhibit some challenges in the area of mathematics, and this is an area that we are absolutely working on. But interestingly, you could see that 46% of ninth graders are actually taking geometry. And out of the 54% of the ninth graders who took Algebra I last year, 20% of those students were school choice and did not attend our kindergarten-through-eighth-grade program. So I thought it was kind of interesting to provide you with a little context there. Here, you can see our elementary, our middle-school, and our high-school level mathematics data. So you could take a peek at that. And then we jump into the district's subgroup data and also the district's program data. And again, in front of you on the little packet that I gave you, you can actually take a look and see the comparison of the Hoboken School District versus districts such as Tom's River and North Arlington and Robbinsville. In terms of the math and ELA data, it is important, and I would like to report out that based on the data that I've been able to gather, I think we will continue, and we have continued to maintain, the highest-performing ELA and highest-performing math status for traditional K to 12 districts in Hudson County, based on the 2023-24 data as well. And recently, I saw an article, a few of the administrators pointed out an article to me recently about some of our local school districts kind of reporting out perfect scores on the NJSLA. And I thought it would be important to see that in our grades three through eight, we had 48 students scoring a perfect score on the NJSLA and 16 students in math. And comparatively speaking, and from a percentage perspective, that's considered to be a pretty good percentage based on our number of students. We also had 11 students at the high-school score, perfect scores as well. But I didn't include that in the data because comparatively speaking, it would have skewed the data. I also wanted to provide you with some information regarding our CTY program. And I've reported out on this before. We've discussed it in, I think, our curriculum committee meeting, and I've talked about this with some of our administrators. But myself and Ms. Rodriguez Gomez and Ms. Gaudio are going to be beginning shortly a pretty intensive review of our Gifted and Talented Program at the elementary level. We've been getting some really good feedback from parents with some recommendations and some feedback and recommendations from staff about how to enhance the program a little bit, how to diversify the program in terms of offerings for students so that it isn't solely CTY offerings. And however, we have noticed a really strong correlation between our CTY data. And as you can see, from 2016-17 to 2024-25, you can actually see the pretty dramatic increase in the number of students participating. That data correlates pretty strongly with the number of students who are falling in the exceeding category on the NJSLA. So we do want to make sure we keep that in mind. We thought it was kind of interesting to let you know that in 2016, we had 12 students registered for English Language Arts in Johns Hopkins Center for Talented Youth. And in 2024, we have 192 students participating. In mathematics, we had the same 12 students in 2016, and we have now 287 students that are participating in taking Johns Hopkins classes in mathematics. So now on to some high-school data. So I selected just a few years so you can kind of get a sense longitudinally where we stood and where we stand now in terms of PSATs and MSQT averages. So you can see back in 2015-16, we fell right in the lower part of the 800 score level, 815. In 2023-24, we showed an average of 942. In 2023-24, we showed an average of 942. And that, I'm not sure if everybody knows this, but we do administer the PSATs to ninth, 10th, and 11th graders at Hoboken High School. You can see our SAT average from 2015-2016, we were at 904 in 2015-16, and in 2023-24, our average rose to 1044. And now on to some of our AP programs. I selected a couple of years as well. Back in 2017-18, we had 21% of students participating in AP program score a three or higher. And as you know, scores of three or higher typically indicate college readiness and can be used by colleges and universities to bypass a particular class for credit. And in 2023-24, our percentage rose to 79.6%. And on the next slide, you know, we talk about it a lot from the perspective of overall scores of three or higher. But often, we don't really break down, so you get the opportunities to see which classes you can see some growth in. So I wanted to provide you with some numbers by class. So I gave you 2020 averages, and these are the averages of all of our students that took these particular AP classes. And then you could see what the averages were in 2024. So you can get a sense of the growth. And I have had people ask, well, that's great, but has the enrollment increased? Has the enrollment not increased in our AP program? And the number of students taking AP classes has dramatically increased at Hoboken High School. This is a really nice summary of our AP program growth on the basis of scholars and awards in the AP program. And if you just draw your attention down to the bottom, where it shows you the number of total scholars. In 2019, in that testing year, we had seven total scholars in the AP program. And in 2024, we had 77. It's not only at the high school that we are focusing on college board work. At our middle school, we also have students participating in pre-advanced placement courses. Our Algebra I course at the middle school is a pre-AP course. We also have a pre-AP offering in world history in eighth grade. And then we also have the performing arts, pre-AP courses. So you can see the increase in the number of students participating at the middle school in the pre-AP courses from 82 in 2021-22 to 156 in 2023-24. And the primary goal for introducing the pre-AP courses at the middle school is really to provide students with an opportunity to experience the advanced placement curriculum and the rigor of those programs, so that when they get to the high school level, they're not necessarily intimidated by the possibility of taking a class, and they're more apt and likely to do so. And we certainly see on the basis of our ninth grade AP programming that many students are certainly willing to take the plunge and jump into AP coursework. I wanted to provide you with also a little bit of a background on the U.S. News and World Report rankings. So you can see that in 2018-19, our ranking, high school ranking nationally was 8,618. That ranking has rose to 3,793 in 2023-24. At the tri-state level, we've increased from a ranking of 584 to a ranking of 372, and our statewide ranking has risen from 265 to 155. We also have some shout-outs, and I'm not going to go through all the athletic components, but I will provide you with a little bit of an overview of some of our academic accolades. The International Schools Olympic, Academic Olympiad that we participated in last year, I know you remember the board meeting when kids were given medals, and it seemed like a lot of students. But we had over 300 Hoboken Public School students participate in the International Schools Academic Olympiad, and we had 109 medals of excellence and 12 medals of international Also, I wanted to report out that all five schools in the district have earned the ability to display the U.S. News and World Report's Best Schools Ranking Badge, as they call it. And so you will be seeing those badges in the form of signs at each of the schools after this meeting. All five of our schools also earned the Lighthouse Distinction through the Blue Ribbon Schools of Excellence. And it's something that was extremely, extremely important to our principals and to myself and our assistant superintendent. Our schools worked extremely hard. Staff members participated in numerous meetings with assessors that were on site. The assessors administered surveys. They spoke with individuals, and we've reported this out before. It also included a pretty thorough review of our student achievement data, our disaggregated data, and provided an opportunity for our principals to work with an assessor on developing action plans for continuous improvement. It was a fairly rigorous process, and I think all of our principals feel very strongly about having gone through the process. And it's interesting because after we completed the process, you will now begin to see more and more schools in New Jersey and New York who were right behind us in this process. In fact, Lenape Valley just recently was awarded the Lighthouse Distinction, Blue Ribbon Distinction. And there are a few other New Jersey schools that will also be awarded in December. I've put on a few of the next slides, some accolades in the area of theater, music and marching bands. You can take an opportunity and look at this when we post these on the website. Once again, we were from 2021 through 2024 named Best Community for Music Education by the NAMM Foundation. We have some great accolades in the area of basketball. We had our head basketball coach in 2024 was named the National Division Coach of the Year. We had some great accolades this school year in 2024 in boys soccer and in girls soccer as well. And we certainly give a shout-out to our head varsity soccer coach, Victoria Gemma, for being named Coach of the Year as well, and for the team winning the conference championship. In tennis, as you heard earlier from Jenna, our high school representative, our tennis team earned the distinction as Hudson County Champions. And we give a shout-out to Diana Rienzo as well. She was named Conference Coach of the Year as well. And our volleyball team has had a great two years of a run. Coach Fernandez was named Hudson County National Division Coach of the Year last year in 2023. Last year, the girls made it all the way to the Central Group One Girls Volleyball Championship. We lost a heartbreaker to New Providence. Was it New Providence? Who did we lose to last year? Who was it?
Dinnell.
Oh, yeah, Dinnell. Yeah. And in 2024, which is this year, we also won the conference championship, but we competed in the Central Group One State Sectional Finals today, and we lost in two sets. It was a heartbreaker. So girls are pretty upset about it, but they'll be back next year. Team is growing and it's building. We had some football highlights for this year, so you can see that Jayom Walker and Jealous Reyes and Isaiah Blanks all had statistics this year that ranked them in the New Jersey Stats leaderboards. So we're happy about that. And you can see that our football team is kind of in a building block stage, but we look forward to great things to come from them. And we also want to give a shout-out to Brant Elementary School for being selected to participate in the Rutgers Promising Practices Project regarding mathematics achievement. And we should be seeing more of the publications regarding their work pretty shortly. And then lastly, in terms of pandemic recovery, it's kind of interesting because there is a body of work out there that has produced an education recovery scorecard. And as a result of the work that we did during the pandemic, our student achievement data looks really interesting nationally in comparison to a lot of other districts. And so you can read a little bit about the project and the education recovery scorecard. It's a body of research put forth by Tom Kane at the Center for Education Policy Research at Harvard and Sean Riordan at Stanford's Education Opportunity Project. And their data and their scorecard is really interesting because you can put your district in, and you can compare your district to other districts across the country. And we're waiting for them to put the 2024 data up. So far, we have 2023 data. We've had it for reading, but we didn't have it for math. So you can kind of see where we stack up and how we've done nationally since the pandemic. You can see an upward trend in the area of reading in grades three through eight, which is the only grade-level band that the scorecard uses for their research. They don't include high school data. And then you can kind of see here, each grade, I mean, each year, where you can see changes. And all of our data on the Hoboken column is showing a positive trend, while New Jersey and similar districts in New Jersey show a little bit of a more inconsistent trend. And then in mathematics, they have finally included the math data, and you could see where we stand in mathematics as well. And where you see the dots, the dotted lines, is during the pandemic, when there was no data collected as a result of no testing. And then you can also see once again the trends, and you can see where Hoboken stands in terms of our positive trends upward, where you can see New Jersey and similar districts in New Jersey's trends are a little bit more inconsistent than ours. And so at this time, I want to give the board an opportunity to potentially ask some questions that you might have. If you don't have any questions, I would definitely encourage you to take a look at the schools' testing reports once those are posted, because you will get probably a better perspective on grade level by grade level in the schools. And once we get those, like I said, we'll post all of those. But for now, district-wide, does anyone have any particular questions that you would like to ask or have any comments, anything?
So my family started out in the Hoboken Public School District in 2010. And before I say this, Dr. Johnson, thank you for this amazing presentation, because it's great to see all of this in one place. But when I started off, you know, with a child in pre-K in 2010, I could have never imagined what you just showed us tonight. And that was actually part of the reason I decided to volunteer my time as a Board of Education member, because I support public education and wanted the best for all students in Hoboken. But seeing all of this in one place, and the successes and the opportunities that our kids are given, it makes me so proud and so grateful for all that you have done since you have been in Hoboken. And I see us going even further under your leadership.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson, for your superintendent's report. We really appreciate it. At this point in time, we will try and... No questions from anyone else on the board? Just going once, going twice? Okay? We will transition into committee reports. Ms. Good, do you have a business administrator's report this evening?
No.
Thank you. We'll go to Mr. Granja for curriculum.
Thank you. Tonight's action and consent agenda items are as follows. 9.01, which is a, we discussed in committee, it's a memorandum of agreement between Fairleigh-Dickinson University for Dual Enrollment, which is a program. Attending of applicable classes at the high school level have access to college-level courses and activity with FDU. It's the longest-running dual enrollment school in New Jersey, and we want to partner to create academy programs that allow access to FDU services for participating high school students. 9.2, which is the submission of the Innovative Dual Enrollment Pilot Grant in the amount of $93,000. We have applied previously. The grant has moved from the, have switched levels of government, and so we are approving the approval tonight, oh yes, is to reapply, reapply. Submission of the NJDOE Artificial Intelligence Innovation in Education Grant in the amount of $75,000. This is an integration grant to help us plan for how AI is implemented in our schools. 9.04 is the submission of the three-year preschool program and updates. We submit this every year. And 9.05, committee requests your approval for the approval of high school trips. Thank you very much. Back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Granja. We'll now go to Mr. De La Torre for facilities.
Facilities committee met on Wednesday, November 6. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Mr. Callagie, Ms. McGurk, Ms. Delara, Mr. Granja, and myself. All agenda items were discussed, and we recommend all for approval. A few notes. The safety doors at Connors and Brant Elementary have been installed and are functioning properly. Hoboken High School and Wallace Elementary safety doors have been measured and ordered. The install date is still being determined. Our new school bus has been received. Currently, our new job coach is working toward her CEL. The current buses housed at Tugler Stadium have reached their useful life and have been auctioned off and will be removed shortly. Lastly, we are awaiting pricing/quotes from vendors to retrofit and install the netting around Hoboken Middle School now that the scaffolding is coming down. More information to come on that front. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. De La Torre. I don't know, Ms. Connaught's not here this evening. Did she pass off the finance report to someone?
She asked me to give the report.
Thank you, Mr. Club.
You're welcome. The committee did meet along with all the other committees on Wednesday, November 6, with me, where Dr. Johnson, Ms. Good, Ms. Lopez, Ms. Katamatory, Ms. Angley, and Ms. Conna. It's a short agenda this evening. There's nothing unusual, and the board did a review and recommends all for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clubfield. We will now go to governance with Ms. Katamatory.
Thank you. Governance Committee met on Wednesday, November 6, 2024. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. Norwood, Ms. McGurk, Mr. Clubfield, and myself. Committee discussed all agenda items and recommends them for approval. Today's agenda includes, among other things, the following items. 10.01 through 10.07 includes the acceptance of various resignations, appointments, rescissions, and modifications to appointments of certificated staff and par professionals for their current school year. 10.08 through 10.12 and 10.14 through 10.15 approve the appointment of... 10.08 through 10.12 and 10.14 through 10.15 approve the appointment of and related stipends for additional co-curricular advisors at Wallace Connors Middle School and High School, as well as after-school CST personnel, as well as our theater and athletic departments, as well as personnel for our theater and athletic departments. 10.17 approves the HIV self-assessments performed by each of the district's schools on October 24, 2024. And 10.20 covers a sidebar agreement to the contract between the board and the HEA regarding the addition of a position of job coach at Hoboken High School. And that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Katamatory. We'll now move on to wellness from Ms. Norwood.
Thank you. The wellness committee met on Wednesday, November 6th, in attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. McGurk, Mr. Delatorre, Ms. Delara, and myself. There is one wellness policy on the agenda, item 7.01, which the committee recommends for approval. And the committee also discussed a number of other items. On the agenda is the first reading of revised policy 5350. This is a revision to the district's suicide prevention policy, which requires a mental health professional to sign off on a child returning to school after a threat of self-harm to ensure that that student has been cleared by an appropriate professional. A list of free resources are available to those that may not have otherwise access to these types of medical professionals. Church Square Park Safety has been a topic in our community. In light of these recent incidents in the park, the administration has reached out to the Hoboken Police Department to discuss safety issues in the park. We note that the park is city property, but many students are in or through the park before and after school. We do look forward to being a part of the ongoing community conversation about safety in the park. Food Philosophy Program with Melissa Benechet. This course has been led by the baked by Melissa founder and the Hoboken Public Schools, and it kicked off on October 25th. There are four sessions in the program which seek to empower students to make informed choices about the food they eat by understanding its nutritional value and its effects on their well-being. The course includes hands-on activities, meals that align with session topics, and the program uses produce from the district's aquaponics units. The first session was very well-received. The district's Student Assistant Counselor, Gina Matera, is handling the annual receipt of and training of staff on Narcan kits that are provided every year by the county. At the end of the school year, the kits are returned to the county. There are, we're considering new sports for school year 2025 to 2026. Administration is sending out parent surveys to elicit interest. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Norwood. I have a brief president's report this evening. I wanted to start out, first of all, just saying thank you to Dr. Johnson for putting together such a wonderful, comprehensive presentation for us on the NJSLA data, but also all of the ancillary achievement data. And I know, Ms. Angley mentioned it earlier, I don't think any of us sitting here could imagine this district would be where it is today, going back 10 or 12 years ago. So thank you for all of the hard work that you've put into getting the district to where it is. These results are a product of a robust commitment from educators, administrators, students, and parents. All of us up here remember the times when Hoboken was a low-performing school district. The road from that point to where we are now has not been a smooth or an easy one. Challenges both internal and external have been overcome, all with the goal of best servicing every single student in this district. And I think in looking at those results from this evening, it really shines through that this is a district that is doing its best to service every student. And if something isn't working, we're going back to the drawing board, and you and your team are figuring out another approach. And I think that's something that should be commended. Investing in our teachers and students yields really tangible results. I personally am so proud of the work that's been done here. I think I can say that on behalf of everyone who's sitting up here. But I want to emphasize that this work continues. It's not something that's done. School district is a living, breathing organism, and I know from the conversations we've had already this fall that you and your team have some really amazing things planned for the future. But I personally want to thank each and every teacher and administrator for their tireless commitment to our students. It does not go unrecognized. To our principals who are here, great. I wish to have more people here for the class, please. We're so proud of all of you. And lastly, this weekend, there is a great opportunity to see our high school students on the stage, performing the Broadway classic "A Funny Thing Happened on the Way to the Forum." The show opens Friday at 7:00 p.m. and will continue through the weekend with two performances on Saturday at 2:00 p.m. and 7:00 p.m. and a 2:00 p.m. performance on Sunday. Please come out and support our amazing theater department. I think this show is going to be fabulous, and it's a great way to get to, you know, engage in some fun and arts locally right here in Hoboken. So next, we will go to public comments on agenda items. And before we get started, I'll read my disclaimer. Over the years and most recently, the board has been asked why it does not prohibit or stop comments about school district employees from individuals who speak during the public comment portion of the meeting. The short answer is that the law prevents the board from censoring comments made about district personnel. The board does not condone, nor is the board a party to comments as such. However, just because a speaker may have the right to say what he or she feels, it does not absolve that speaker from liability for any comments that could be viewed as defamatory by an employee. Should speakers say something that subjects them to a civil suit, the responsibility falls squarely on the speaker and not on the board. Board policy requires that all speakers please state your name, municipality of residence, and business affiliation, if any. Speakers are allowed five minutes, and Vice President Angley will quietly motion when you have 30 seconds left. Please address all comments to the chair. Board policy states the board welcomes comments on matters of interest to the board, but this is not an opportunity for dialogue or debate between speakers and board members or the superintendent.
Ms. Wade.
It's so funny that you give that presentation, but you fail to mention that you guys have an attorney here, Mr. Gagliardi, that supervises it. So when you say risking a lawsuit, you feel like you've got confidence in Mr. Gagliardi, am I right? So I can't address him either with these matters, and I'm an employee in-house? Ma'am?
This is not designed to be a back-and-forth between you and me.
It's not a back-and-forth. I need an answer so I can proceed.
Address your comments to me and move on from there.
Right, so Mr. Gagliardi, these are your clients, am I right?
Yes, they, the board's my client.
Thank you, sir. Just to place on the record, so learn professionalism, please, and try to bring some integrity back into the board. I'm here to speak on a few items, this agenda items, because I could say all of the comments for the public portion.
This is comment on agenda items.
Okay. It's real disturbing. I was told, and also another employee was told, that you're cutting funding, and fundings are short, that we don't have no funding. I'm seeing grants, I'm seeing hiries, I'm seeing, again, the stipends on page. Prince says, oh, I don't want to say names either, because nobody signed the rights to them. But on 10.09, 10.08, approve of this young lady, $2,858, three times. I hope just with it being written three times, that's three times she get paid, or is that just one stipend? And that ain't no dollar. I need an answer. We talk about this far too many times. The same title, the same exact band title, shows whether you're singing, dancing, elementary advisory. She get that three times, right?
First of all, it's he.
He, she, I'm sorry. Well, I don't give names. The individual, they get that three times?
Yes, because it's three distinct, different activities.
That's good enough, ma'am. Let me go do this fast. That's good enough. The stipend, out again, on the next page, the following page, 10.11, approve of 997. That's just a one-time stipend, right, for African-American?
Yes, that's a, that's a one-time stipend for advising the African-American club. They advise for the duration of the entire school year. So that's one time, $997, no matter how much time the person puts into it.
Okay, so that's, we'll get the scenario from the 2,000, three times. Okay, I'll come back on the public portion. And to disposal of the equipment, this the first time ever seeing this, when I overheard yesterday, the parent was told to do a police report over a broken computer. Is this why? Because the disposal of the computer? And you're being very rude. I'm gonna give you an opportunity. You can address your boss, Ms. Dr. Johnson or whatever, but I'm talking to you. I'm addressing the chair, as you said in the beginning, okay? So can we give respect on both avenues? Thank you.
Go right ahead.
And the bid, the bid for the, the two bids, the 30, 90, and 3,000, make sure I got it right. For the artificial intelligence? These are not bids, these actually grants. And Mr. Granja said, tonight, please approve yes. I mean, these grants are for, like, the whole district? Is our kid allowed to utilize it? Because we definitely need some. The artificial int, is this a class? These two grants?
Curriculum.
Mr. Granja, maybe you can help them out? You mentioned the grants. It's on the agenda.
Could you tell, just reference what agenda item it is, and we can tell you a lot.
It's on there. It's two grants. It's just two. I just want to know, is it, like, how are we gonna utilize that money? Is there a grant for a class or whatever?
The AI grant?
Yes, the AI is another.
The AI grant is a New Jersey Department of Education grant that's a competitive grant. It's for a whole host of things, like professional development for staff members, for purchasing technology.
Innovation, innovation, the whole language. All right, so this is what I'm saying. And the artificial intelligence, these gonna be classes that our kids can utilize also.
Correct. If we're granted the, if we're awarded the grant.
If you get the reward for the grant was other bids, this was up for bid for any time.
It's not, it's not a bid. We're submitting to the state of New Jersey for grant funding. And then they will select the districts who receive the grant funding. We're not guaranteed it. All this is doing is the board approving our application. And we're at five minutes.
That's sufficient. All right, I'm wrapping it up.
Thank you, Ms. Wade.
Get to the checklist. I see the facility director here.
Ms. Wade, it's been five minutes.
On agenda, I'm wrapping it up. I said the facilities director is two of.
It's been, Ms. Waiters, it's been five minutes. You're welcome to come back up for comments on non-agenda items.
All right, so I just closed it out. One second, I'm asking you about the facility director to an agenda.
And it's, and it's been five minutes. You want respect from me? You have to respect our timeline.
Where's the courtesy, too? I see people come up here all the time and wrap it up, and you give them the courtesy. I'm asking you a simple question. I just want to know.
You have another five minutes in comments on agenda and non-agenda items where you can.
I just ask, where do the funding go? I don't need you to get upset every time, just that would have been a second. You just gave me more than that. I just want to know where do the funding go?
Which, which particular funding?
Both of them. If you got two, I think one of them is ZA. Here we go right here, before you interrupt me. So, I wanted to know simply, it says facility director, they ran out of facilities. Where do the money go? Y'all have a kitty?
The money comes back into the school district.
All right, thank you. That's, I'll be back.
No, no more questions, no more views.
Mr. Wade, another speaker.
Hi, good evening. Christopher Munoz, Hoboken Education Association. I'm a teacher at Hoboken High School. I just want to clarify that the member that was brought up in question is being paid three separate stipends, as you mentioned, President McGurk, for this, for these positions. They are three separate positions, not being paid three times for the same thing. And I want to clarify that, because it was clearly stated in the agenda. Also, the, what this is compared to the African-American Culture Club are two separate roles and responsibilities. One's program, one's an after-school program, and they're paid at HEA rate. So it's not like we are prioritizing early morning chorus over the African-American Culture Club at Hoboken High School, which, as the student activities coordinator, I am proud that the African-American Culture Club's coming back. But as an HEA representative, as the vice president, I couldn't be in good conscience sit in the audience and have it presented as it's being, one member's being paid three separate times. They're three different job roles. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Munoz. We are going to move on to our consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Good, can you please call the roll?
Yes, I can. Ms. Angley?
I am going to abstain on 6.02 and yes on everything else.
Ms. Katamatory?
Yes.
Ms. Delara?
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre?
Yes.
Mr. Granja?
Yes.
Mr. Clubfield?
Yes.
Ms. Norwood?
I'm abstaining on 13.03 and yes on the rest.
13.03?
Yep.
Thank you. And Ms. McGurk?
Abstaining on 10.04 and yes on everything else.
Motion passes.
We will now move on to public comments on agenda and non-agenda items.
Ms. Waiters?
Patricia Waiters, and for the record, I'm doing my own five minutes, because I'm not here to make an enemy, and you cannot silence me, because I'm gonna say it anyway. This is serious. When I come out here, I'm out here for almost 4,000 or more people that voted for me, okay? And clearly, the last speaker, it's embarrassing. When you get up here and you try to defend wrongdoing, you know exactly where I was going with that. Three different things, there one person doing three different things. I'm guessing him used to go and do the same. People come up here all the time and question your integrity, okay? So I can list anything, and that's how politics go in this town. Dirty politics. So that brings me back to what I'll be speaking about tonight, Ms. McGurk. Since the last election between you and I, you raised concerns, okay? Whether it was legal or was I doing something illegal with respect to somebody donating me a few flyers? However, I have the contract here, I mean, I'm sorry to complain here, from one of my opponents that served on your ticket was charged. You were an attorney, you was charged. Again, let me finish, because when stuff is public information, you cannot hide it, okay? This is public, I shared it with everybody. But my main focus is not holding you guys accountable. I don't care if you're friends with Mr. Granja, you're friends with Dr. Johnson, you're friends with Tom. I don't want to be nobody's friend. I'm gonna get to the bottom of this, okay? Since I'm the underdog that y'all always attack every year, I'm told not to run, I'm being harassed, and I said it for two years. And counsel, please, please, I didn't even look at it as a friend, clearly professional. I reached out to you, you waited four days later, you contacted me, and this is your statement, okay? You said to me, "I am not authorized to discuss the district matters with an individual employee." And you also reiterated what I said earlier, you are their client. Okay, those are your clients, right? So if those are your clients, it's a huge conflict of interest. When I told you, I got over 100, we've been doing this for two years. I got over 193 videos that I've been in court, and you keep telling me that the Board of Education don't supposed to have nothing to do with the union and what the union did to me. You absolutely correct. However, I called the New Jersey Board of Education Association, you know where they sent me back to you. I got everything in writing, I keep notes, still to present. You ran against me three more times, none of you had enough integrity to say, "Pat, let's me." You told me, clearly here, you're not having this conversation with me, not even knowing what I'm talking about. I'm being harassed still, I'm still employed, I'm being retaliated against. And when you asked me, I told you I got proof. This is what's disturbing. So when we went to court Thursday, rewind and update, the judge looked at the prosecutor, because you know what he said? "I want to change and change my venue, because it's a conflict of interest." Robbie, your law firm is on Robbie's contract, guys. And I asked you for two years, let's do this right. There are 4,000 people that voted for me, and it's fired up and fed up. You keep winning and sitting up there claiming victory with all of this shenanigans. I'm telling you, I'm not going nowhere. I'm telling you out of respect, because all of y'all sitting up there, y'all kids are benefiting, and parents are still coming to me, our kids are being kicked out, they at home. I work here. Every day is disgusting, it's none of our kids. You come and pick up your kid, I'm taking my kid to the, my kids is going home for disciplinary issues. This is serious, guys. Do what you gotta do to me, I'm ready to fight. And I'm asking you, counsel, please, please, find it in your heart to find some type of integrity and bring back to this board to protect the reputation of this Board of Education, because we far too way in. Y'all all look the opposite way and took a disregard to the seriousness what happened to me and my family. You have families that live here. We don't need no outsiders coming in this community, dividing our families, and hurt so many people in spite of being scared of me and y'all losing power. Y'all made my enemy, just like you, everybody watching you. You just started an argument with me. Go ahead, Ms. Waiters, but I've seen people, I've been coming to meetings 27 years, standing here, and you say, "Okay, go ahead, wrap it up." People watch y'all disrespect me. Three times Mr. Clubford a seat became available, y'all didn't put me in that seat. Do you know how to make my? Do you know how I make my people feel? People that look like me, the Latinos, the Blacks, the Housing Authority?
You have 30 seconds, Ms. Waiters.
They are fed up, and I can't help but get emotional, because my kids is being impacted. My parents are being impacted, just like your kids in the district. We depend on a public school district. We don't have money, but we can go elsewhere. With your kid with a nice fishery job, your kid with a job, my daughter qualifies, money can't get one because I'm fat weight. Not because it ain't no funding, because I'm fat weight. Mr. Gagliardi, I'm wrapping it, and I'm ending it with this, and I promise you, I will do it.
Five minutes.
I need you to put me in the right direction, and yes, I will be following up with this. Please, please, let's do what's right for this community. Thank you.
There, there's no other names on the agenda.
So the, the board president has asked me to respond publicly, and I, I don't know that she saw the, the email that I sent you. So I, I just want to be clear for you and for anyone who might be concerned about what you have to say. What, what the email said is that I am not authorized to respond to complaints from employees. One might only imagine what the district's legal bills would look like if I was. But the email also said that there are avenues for you to have your concerns heard. So there is a grievance process through the union, there is an affirmative action office that is available to all employees, and then, of course, there's the, the court system that you made reference to. So there are many vehicles available for you to articulate your concerns, have them investigated, and have them addressed. My response, which you only read a small portion of, is that the board does not expect their outside counsel to be that vehicle for hearing concerns when there are other well-established avenues for you to have your concerns heard and addressed. Well, I don't have, I don't have it in front of me, I just have a good memory. The rest of the emails.
This is serious, and this is, I did go talk to the director, they said any neighbor relation, you was right to agree, but you didn't read one. You did not look at the evidence that I have. I never follow your play there, I have the evidence to show the truth. That's based on it, I should reach out to you. You keep saying the union, the one you're playing against is the union.
I understand that. So I gave you, I gave you, I gave you three avenues, I'll, I'll do it one more time. And obviously, if you filed the complaint with the affirmative action office here, and they, and, uh, no, no, I'm saying, if, if you filed a complaint through the vehicles available to all district employees, of course, they would turn to my firm for advice. But my firm does not consider employee complaints. That's not our role. We advise our client when the employee files the complaints through the appropriate channels. And that's what I'm asking you to do if you want to have your grievances considered. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Gagliardi. We will be going into executive session now for the purposes of discussing matters covered by attorney-client privilege. We will not be taking any action, so we'll be just coming back to close the meeting. We will be approximately 45 minutes to an hour. Do I have a motion?
No, I need to read the resolution that Vito gave me. Do you want me to read it, the exact session, Vito?
Yes, the, the.
Want me to read the entire resolution?
No, I don't think we do that. The, the reasons, the reasons for the executive session are contractual matters and matters covered by the attorney-client privilege. That should just be reflected before a vote is taken.
All right, can I?
No action will be taken.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Good, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Ms. Catamatory?
Yes.
Ms. Delira? Mr. Delatore?
Yes.
Mr. Granja?
Yes.
Mr. Clubful?
Yes.
Ms. Norwood?
Yes.
Ms. McGurk?
Yes.
Motion passes at 8:37 p.m.
Good evening, it's now 9:51 p.m., and we are coming back from executive session. Do I have a motion to resume the meeting?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please, Ms. Good?
Ms. Catamatory, excuse me, Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Ms. Catamatory?
Yes.
Ms. Delira?
Yes.
Mr. Delatore?
Yes.
Mr. Granja?
Yes.
Mr. Clubful?
Yes.
Ms. Norwood?
Yes.
Ms. McGurk?
Yes.
And with no further business, do I have a motion to close the meeting?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Have a lovely evening.